Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 26th of January 2015. Let us all rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, which today is, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. When you come up, would you please spell your last name for us or your name so that we can get it right? Go ahead, Teresa.
All right. In honor of President's Day, just a reminder, there will be no city council meeting on Monday, February 16th. Our public hearing consent agenda are items 1 through 8.
That's not right. Yeah, I don't think you said that right. See, aren't we talking about February?
February 16th.
Yeah, you said January, please.
I'm sorry, February 16th. And our consent agenda are items 1 through 8. Is our mics working?
It doesn't seem to be.
Yeah.
We'll muddle through. Yeah, hey, see, we didn't even have to muddle through.
Now they are.
See how easy that was? Okay.
All right. So as a reminder, in honor of President's Day, there will be no city council meeting on Monday, February 16th. Our public hearing consent agenda are items 1 through 8.
Anybody like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. We just have one. Item 5 was introduced by Cook.
So moved. Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion, call a roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next would be our liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call item 9, application of John Jendra doing business as Shooter's Bar and Grill for a Class C liquor license at 200 West P Street. Just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
John Jendra, 3701 Paxton Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Any questions?
Uh, no.
We get to ask you that, but that's okay. Hang right in there with us, all right? Oh, you did fine. Go ahead, John.
Well, first, I want to compliment you on how you spell John. That's very good. Secondly, we're given a history of your life in doing these applications, and there were a couple of situations, looked like you had some challenges a few years ago. Do you have any comments on that, or have you maintained a good profile in the recent years?
Yeah, I used to do some stuff a lot of years ago, and I'm not really proud of it. But, you know, the last time I ever got in any sort of predicament was 10 years ago, really.
Okay. John?
Well, I think the question here is, why were those violations from 10 or more years ago not disclosed? Why was it that the police department had to provide those when, in fact, the applicant is supposed to provide their full criminal history?
That may be a misprint, Jonathan. Mine says Mr. Jendra did disclose the following convictions.
No, on the second page.
Second page, there are a bunch that weren't.
I don't have a second page.
They upgraded it.
Okay.
You did file an amended version.
Yep.
Can you explain why you missed whatever?
Truth, I didn't remember certain things, you know, several years ago. And, you know, I was in a four-wheeler accident about eight years ago, and there's certain years I don't remember everything about.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Sorry, Jonathan. I don't have that page in mind, sorry.
Doug?
Carl? Yes, thank you. Mr. Jendra, thanks for being here. Tell us about your experience in working with sales of alcohol in the last few years that you've been involved in with that at all.
For nine years, I was a cook at fine dining restaurants and country clubs, and I did, you know, bartend a little bit here and there and do stuff like that. And I was involved in ordering and food, you know, having the food come in, do food orders and stuff like that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, you're excused. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call item 10, application of Small Town Bar, Inc., doing business as Rosie Sports Bar and Grill to expand its Class I liquor license for an addition of an outdoor area approximately 25 feet by 31 feet to the south at 1501 Center Park Road.
Hello.
Hi. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Just state your name and address.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Tim Rowland, 727 West Jennifer Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Any questions?
Carl? Yes, Mr. Rowland, you have been to us before.
Yes.
In a couple of different capacities, but with this particular facility, this is maybe the third time?
Yes.
And so it seems like you're expanding every time you...
The business is growing, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I have a, this is an investment property for me. It's a, I have a business partner that runs the business for me, and we expanded into a banquet facility just a few months ago, and that was when I was here for the second time. And now we are adding a beer garden. So that's what this one's all about, is to let people sit outside, so.
All right.
Yeah, the business is good.
Good. Thank you.
There's a vision there. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Be here for golf.
No, he's... Anybody, staff questions? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. I'll call items 11 through 14 together. They're the application of Midwest Slims LLC doing business as Slim Chickens for two locations. One is for a Class I liquor license at 1601 Pine Lake Road, and the other is for a Class I liquor license at 5805 South 85th Street, and the two related manager application is of William Hooks. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Tim O'Neil. I'm with Harding Schultz, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is kind of exciting, new restaurant, fast casual, chicken's very popular and very healthy, and this offers an expanded menu of wraps and wings and tenders, and it's pretty exciting. We get a little taste of southern hospitality brought to Lincoln, so any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Staff questions? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right. We can go ahead and vote on these items.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of all items, 9 through 14.
Second.
Carl? Discussion?
I would like to ask a question about item number 9, and that is just, is there a difference in what we received in hard copy versus what was online? Because what was online showed that there was a recommendation to disclose, a number of other items that were discovered by LPD, and it wasn't clear to me that those had been, an amendment had been filed. Are you saying that there was an amendment filed and that everything was disclosed in time?
No, that's Conan. Conan, can you come up, please?
Conan Schaefer, investigator with the Lincoln Police Department.
Just trying to get at whether or not there was intentional concealment of some of these violations, or if, in fact, on your advice, the applicant did provide all the information required.
It's my opinion that there was not an intentional effort to try to conceal the violations, that a lot of it has to do with what's available to them is less than what's available to me, what's that was brought to the applicant's attention. They did file an amendment to their liquor license application. I had already forwarded my packet of information to the council at that time, so the updated information didn't, wasn't included in that application.
Okay. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Well, this has come up before, and I guess it's unclear what the applicant doesn't have access to sometimes. I mean, some of these are fairly significant violations, and are you saying that those violations may not have been available, or we're not sure?
Well, I guess I can tell you I know what information is available to me, and I've never, it's been a long time since I've had to obtain my criminal history for employment, and that was fairly easy because I didn't really have anything, so I don't know, I don't really know what they have, what they have to go through. I do have a sense, based on the previous applications, that some applicants either don't know how to obtain a full listing of their violations or don't have access to, I don't know.
Well, I guess, given that this is an important part of the review process, and we are frequently tripped up by it, where somebody doesn't disclose something or another, and we have to determine, was it intentional, was it not? It's difficult for us to get into the minds of the applicant, and I guess if, in fact, it's unclear perhaps to applicants how to obtain a history, maybe we need to provide some additional instructions. I don't know what instructions we provide today, but if we're looking at a full history, and people may have had violations 10, or 15, or 20 years ago, it's important that they know how, rather than for us to...
And I agree.
...do the homework.
When I look at it, I do address that in my interview and background with them, and then the issue, you know, once I get past, you know, whether it was intentional or not intentional, and then I just have the violations to deal with, you know. It's what's in front of me, regardless of whether they disclosed it or not, do they rise to the level of, you know, concern or something that would, you know, be of concern to the council? So in this particular instance, it was not my impression after interviewing and discussing the situation with them that there was an attempt to deceive or not disclose, but there's a, there is still that issue. I don't know the answer to how to better make those criminal convictions accessible to them.
Well, maybe this is something that the ILC can discuss, since I know that's been brought up as potential topic, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Conan, is this your, is this such the process normally, though? If you get something and it doesn't show up, do you call a person to give them an opportunity to put an amendment amended?
I do. Yeah, I meet with all of them in depth.
Okay. So maybe the answer is, is if they file an amendment amended, they at least understand that it's out there and available, and they've got to put it down. If you don't, then clearly, maybe that was your intent all along.
Well, obviously, if it's brought to their attention by the police department, they're likely to list it as in an amendment. So if that's our process now, that we simply always just accept an amendment, then intentional concealment isn't even an issue. We will never really know whether that was the fact.
Well, I think that Director Cassidy mentioned, when I asked about this, that criminal history records are available online or at police headquarters in person or by mail, and that driving history records are available at the DMV. So maybe if it is possible to provide that information to those who might not understand that or know that at the beginning of the process, so we don't have to have the back and forth in the filing of an amendment. It seems like to me it would be a more straightforward process, and if the ILC would look at how to potentially convey that information upfront, it could probably be better for the process generally and for the applicants.
The problem is, a majority of these applications originate from the state, and they don't pass on information to the applicant all the time. And if applicants do sometimes file an amendment, we don't always receive it from the state either. So we're not getting it until the application's already in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Conan. Anybody like to speak to this item? Again, next item, please.
We have our motion.
John has a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Frich seconded.
Carl, second. Okay. Discussion, call a roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next would be our public hearing resolutions. Item 15 is a resolution declaring the official intent of the City of Lincoln, Nebraska, to reimburse certain expenses in connection with the acquisition, purchase, and installation of light poles and related equipment from the proceeds of City of Lincoln, Nebraska certificates of participation.
Steve Hupka, City Finance Department. This resolution is something that is exactly like what we've brought to the city council for many years now as part of our streetlight financing program. We've issued certificates of participation almost every year, if not every year, for the last 13 or 14 years, and what this allows us to do, as Teresa said, is to reimburse ourselves for expenses we're currently incurring with proceeds of these cops issues when they are issued. And we would expect to come back to the city council within a few short weeks to get formal authorization to issue those bonding instruments, because interest rates are extremely low right now. And sooner we get in the market with those, the better off we'll be, and the more money we'll save. So we would like, ask you to pass this resolution to reimburse ourselves. The amount is an amount that was determined based on information we received from LES and from our engineering department as to what we expect to need for streetlight projects and other replacements and so on in 2015. So we won't probably need, well, we won't need to reimburse ourselves that full amount, but I did want to include the full amount of the possible debt issue here so that you are aware of what that amount of money might be when we issue it. I would add that when we prepared the biennial budget, we made accommodations for the debt service on these in the second fiscal year of the biennium.
John?
Just for the benefit of our viewers, citizens, could you go through and how many of these cops certificates we have outstanding for the light program, the light pole program, and the term, and how we're paying that down? How much principal's outstanding?
Yeah, we have about $14 million outstanding currently, and that was as the end of the last fiscal year, so as this fiscal year proceeds, it'll, some of those will be paid off. And as we talked about, the last cops issue in 2014 with the sidewalks and the entryways, I think we illustrated to you how some of the initial issues that were passed in the early part of the last decade will be paid off by about 2017. So we're going to see a relative, relatively rapid payoff of some of the older ones. So that's a good thing, obviously, and some of those first ones were the bigger ones as well, as far as the original amount.
And what's the term on these that you expect, and the amount that we're looking at?
Well, the 10-year treasury right now is about 1.8, and the rate will be a little higher than that, but I would think certainly less than 3%.
So you're looking at 10 years on these?
15.
And the principal amount again, please?
Any other questions? Thanks. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Additional staff questions? Next item, please.
All right. Next, I'll call item 16, Comp Plan Conformance 14026, approving an amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to amend the 18th and P multifamily Redevelopment Project to include the adjacent rights of way of Antelope Valley Parkway, 18th Street, Q Street, P Street, O Street, N Street, and a protected bike lane on N Street.
Members of the city council, Dave Landis, the Urban Development Department, directly applicant in this case. December 15th, you approved the redevelopment agreement for the Aspen project, and I think it was something that all of us were pleased with. And this is a developer who has a particular concern about bicycles. They will provide bicycle parking for almost 40% of the people living in the building, 322 stalls of bicycle parking. So that's an important part of where they are, given the relationship to the university and, of course, to the recreation activities on the Antelope Valley Bike Path or the ways down to the West Haymarket and all of the excitement there. In the redevelopment agreement, the developer and the city recited that the developer is committed to promoting the use of bicycles as an alternative mode of transportation, has included bicycle facilities, is aware the perceived comfort and safety are major factors holding back cyclists. Therefore, the redeveloper is requesting that the city support its efforts by constructing the city's proposed N Street cycle track. The redeveloper recognizes the city may not have sufficient funds available for the extension of the N Street cycle track as designed, and therefore, redeveloper, the redeveloper is requesting that the city use a portion of the available TIF bond proceeds to be set aside for other public improvements as provided in Section 304. That was $650,000. We're asking today to do exactly that, and to do that, we need to change the plan boundaries for this project area, and we need to move down Antelope Valley Parkway a block, and then to include the areas here on N Street. It's consistent with the comp plan, it's consistent with the downtown master plan, it's consistent with what the city's been asking for, it's consistent with the redevelopment agreement, it's consistent with the action of the planning commission who voted 9-0 and spoke quite approvingly of the project, particularly to the developer, and thanked the developer for their contribution to make this happen. What questions may I answer for you?
Questions? John?
Could you walk through the chronology of what's going to happen here? Because you're asking tonight for the amendment in the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan that broadens the area for the bike lane.
As best I can tell you is this: we have already signed a contract for half of the construction. With this piece, we'll have the money to sign a construction contract for the other part of this. Design is complete, and construction begins in March. The construction will be on the most eastern and the most western part of the project, and then it will move across the city in increments of about three blocks. The project management will be done by PC Sports, and they're here tonight, by the way, should you want to talk to them, and we anticipate completing the project by October.
Well, I guess my question would be, in starting this, and I think now the current price tag's around 3.25 million, if I recall correctly, what if we had protected bike lanes that cost $2 million less?
Then we'd have bike lanes that cost $2 million less, and there we have it.
What can we do tonight to go toward that direction and not build fairly elaborate bike lanes and still have, I mean, isn't, I think the idea of the community and the advocates is to have some type of a protected bike lane, and then it becomes a matter of what level of sophistication, sophistication, how much you want to spend on it? And do you want a Rolls Royce bike lane, or perhaps something lesser that still achieves the functionality of having a protected bike lane?
I think we're bringing you a package that includes the funding and the design for the bikeway that the city wants, and when I say the city, I'm talking about the administration, not necessarily the city council, but when, with substantial interaction with the community, including the biking community, the employer community, DLA, and others. If you were to alter that, one certainly could do that, but it would require, I think, a different vision from the city administration as it sees the protected N Street bike lane. So I think you might do it this way. You might start over with a much lower price tag and a very different design and assemble the political wherewithal to achieve that end.
So if you're saying tonight, we're making this monetary commitment and starting the ball rolling, would the administration be willing to hold off on this decision for a little bit to have some dialogue about some alternatives that would save the community maybe $2 to $3 million?
The administration's worked very hard to assemble this package, believes in the design, and is asking the city council to act.
But would they be willing to...
And by the way, one of the things that's important is a construction period that begins in early spring and is completed by October, fits into that timeline, and in increments that will allow the minimum amount of disruption. So there is a rather good deal invested over time. I don't think it's been a mystery what our design is, it's, we've certainly let the public know, and we've tried to assemble that package of ideas, revenue, design commitments, and the voluntary contributions of the biking community in this vision. If you wanted to substitute a very different vision, it might happen next time, but I don't think the administration would ask the city council to put their, to put this on hold and to start, to start over in the redesign process, knowing that it may not be universally...
Still achieve protected bike lanes at a cost of less than $1.5 million for that same expanse, why would you not consider that?
One of the things that I think is important is to make sure that the first bike lane that we do is very effective, utilitarian, and gains the support of the community.
But this is...
When that happens, I think you're going to be able to find other locations where protected bike lanes, perhaps in a very simplified design form, might very well be the request of the biking community and the community at large. This is the vision that's been out there for at least a year, John, and we haven't hidden the ball. And to the extent that we've been able to assemble parties that buy into that vision, I hope, and I guess we'll find out tonight, if we've been successful.
But when you go through the funding sources, as you know, you've had to stretch everywhere, and just like this tax increment district, stretch it to get that $650,000 and others, and those are dollars in the community. And again, if we can achieve the protected biking lane at substantially, substantially less cost, why don't we do that rather than try to achieve this sophisticated bike lane that maybe is more for some national ward rather than for functionality and fiscal reasons?
One of the things that's expensive about this bike lane is the signalization to make sure that it fits the street. It is possible to achieve a protected bike lane with paint and ballards. It would be cheap.
It'd be economical.
It would also be significantly less safe than designed here, where you signalize both pedestrians and the drivers and the bikes, which is a substantial amount of the money here. There may be a simplified version, and the community may say upon looking at this, gosh, we don't need to do this a second time. We like the idea, but do it in a simpler form. Or they may say, this is the form we like. We're not sure. But we do think that this is the vision in which we've placed before the community for a rather considerable period of time, a design that we think is handsome, we think it's safe, and we think it's inviting. And those are all qualities that we, that we're behind in trying to achieve this end. And those are all qualities that we're behind in trying to achieve this end.
Larry?
Dave, you said that this vision's been in place for a long time, but actually, I think we should revisit the whole idea of the Parks Blocks concept, because this original vision for the bike lane was a much grander design with a much different feel, with much more landscaping. Can you speak to that? Can you confirm that in the original plans, in the downtown master plan, the Parks Blocks concept was actually much more extensive, and that this, in fact, represents a much scaled-back version?
Before the downtown master plan was amended, there were bike paths on both M and N Street. And with respect to M Street, as I recall, we anticipated, over time, securing 50 feet of right-of-way from property holders or our own use, which would have allowed for a substantially different and greener and probably more costly project than what we had before us. And that design was in the downtown master plan for six or seven years. And it was twice what this is, because it was on two different streets.
And with the N Street bike lane as envisioned today, this is different than a normal bike trail, and certainly different than other trails that run downtown, because it is considered an east-west thoroughfare. It is considered almost the main street for bicycles, if you will, to allow for safe passage from the university on the east to the Haymarket in the west. Is that fair?
That is fair, in that there are two substantial bike systems in Lincoln that do not have a downtown connector. And there are people who say, "Gosh, why are there bikes on sidewalks?" Or, "Why do we see them in the form that they are?" And one of the reasons is there isn't an easy connector from all of the very extensive and, by the way, lauded projects to the east and to the west. This will allow somebody to traverse downtown from almost all of southern or northern-eastern Lincoln to get to the Haymarket by bike. And in that way, I think it is the missing mile, if you will, of our system. And by the way, our system is nationally recognized in many ways. This would be an improvement.
And one of the main concerns of downtown employers is parking. And so is it fair to say that the DLA and other downtown businesses are also supporting this in an effort to alleviate some of the parking concerns that they have?
We have heard from employers who say, particularly if they have a younger workforce, that that workforce asks them or would like them to participate in more biking option. They would consider it. Some of them are considering, or have put in showers, for example. Some of them, we've had the use of and request for bike parking in our garages to accommodate that. We can't quantify that exactly, but we do have substantial downtown employers who said, "This is part of what our workforce is." And in almost every case, it is a younger workforce. "I probably won't be riding my bike to work."
And this project was bid once before, but the administration determined that the price tag was too high. So this represents a second round with a lower price tag, correct?
It does, and there were a couple of reasons for that. We had one bidder. It was a point at which any bidder, because of all of the construction in Lincoln, would have had to invent and put onto work crews that did not then exist. So to invent a workforce for the project gave a very substantial bump, which, upon reflection, didn't actually conform to what would happen if you could plan ahead with your team. What PC Sports has done in the last several months is to interview the construction firms and ask for scheduling ideas and ask for ways to encourage them, and have talked about the design. It's one of the reasons that they will be able to hit the ground running when it comes time in contract administration. It would be fair to say that there isn't anybody associated with city government who would like a replication of the first half of the P Street project, which was slow and difficult and painful for everyone. The second half of that was where, upon reflection and efforts from several different perspectives, it gained speed and got back on track. And one of the parties that helped us do that was the oversight of engineers talking to engineers, construction managers talking to construction managers, and that was PC Sports. They've been on this project for the last several months, or more than that, in getting the bid, and they'll be there in the administration of the contract.
My last question was, just to reiterate, that this project also has a considerable amount of private support from individuals, hundreds and hundreds of individuals in the community, as represented by the Nebraska Trails Foundation, the Great Plains Trails Network. They're contributing, do you remember how much money to this project?
$300,000 would be a reasonable number to use, Susan. I'm going to see if it's about that. $340,000. My third base coach says $340,000. I will say this, by the way, that at different times when we were contemplating a simplification of the process, the existing design was part of the reason that they were there. And they said, "We like this design. That's why we will help you with this money." And that was so that when we were thinking of simplifications of the design because of monetary reasons, the message from the biking community was, "The design's not wrong. The design's right, and we'll help some more."
Thank you.
John, Larry's questions are pretty comprehensive, so I don't have a whole lot to ask. I just want to note, since someone could perhaps infer from Mr. Camp's comments that the council wasn't involved in these discussions over many years, and that suddenly here you're bringing us a project that we haven't really played a role in, and this is a surprise, and we're just expected to approve it. And that would be a wrong impression if anybody has that impression. I feel like we have been involved, and we have been in meetings, and we have been presented designs, and I've gone to open houses on this project. And of course, it isn't just us as council members who are involved in this project. It's also members of the community, and certainly, Great Plains Trails and their involvement. I mean, that's a really important element of this. So it's hard to get that kind of support without a good back-and-forth community outreach portion. So certainly, I feel like I've been involved, and I know it's a compromised project. There are a lot of people involved in it, and so to say now, gee, would you put this on hold, would be problematic, it seems to me, given that people have contributed money to this, as was just talked about, with this design in mind. That's fair to say, correct?
I think it's fair to say. It would be fair to say that we are not unanimous as a community.
No, no.
This one would be true as well. I do think that the administration has assembled this package and offers it to the council. And I must say that in December, we highlighted exactly the piece that we're asking today, and we said then, "The developer is asking that you do this. This is consistent with their design for the $40 million project that we were all pretty darn glad to have in the Antelope Valley," I think. So that's what brings us here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Trent?
Do we have any numbers on cyclists downtown? I know you said you didn't have any from employers, but do we have any sort of data on how much cycling's grown over the time since we put the first initial white stripes?
That might be a better question for the third base coach.
Okay, I'll wait on that one then.
Very, very good point. Thank you.
Okay, I'll write that one down.
I can see you twisting, not literally, but kind of, yeah, headed that direction. So I think we'll let her ask and say that's okay.
I'm going to get our frighters in this shoulder from looking over like that.
And then my follow-up question is, when do you start construction on this, assuming that we move forward? And, you know, what can people do that work along this area or live along this area? How they can work with PC Sports in the construction?
PC Sports is here, and by the way, would be happy to answer that. A couple of things will happen. First, they would anticipate calling together all of the folks along the line and have an open house to discuss the project and the scheduling so they can interact with that. The second thing to keep in mind is that we did a lot of work on P Street, in which we broke up sidewalks and reconstructed them. That made getting to the front door of a business very difficult. We won't be doing that on the sidewalks. We'll be working essentially from the curb out, so that we don't anticipate the same kind of dislocation that we experienced then. And that second half of that P Street project is a base of experience that I'm sure PC Sports will carry with them into the N Street project from the beginning. And that involved answering questions, coming on site, talking to the construction crews, and talking to the employers, you know, across the sidewalk.
I think that engagement's key, because I think that's what kind of got us in trouble with P Street, is that, you know, there was so much right on the street with people. I've heard a couple of business owners be concerned about, you know, losing their parking or losing the access right to the door of their business. So it's good to hear that that's not going to happen. But I am happy to see that we're having some engagement here with those businesses, because, you know, they have been through construction along this area before, not pretty recently. And I know there's some concern that they're going to lose that access. So that's good to know.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
So my name is Karen Griffin. I'm the current president of the Great Plains Trails Network. My last name is spelled G-R-I-F-F-I-N. I just wanted to say again, I'm glad to be up here speaking in support of the N Street Protected Bikeway Cycle Track, many names for this great project. We have over 800 members in our organization. Our commitment to this project has increased over the last couple of years from an initial commitment of $200,000 from the community. We then increased it to 262. And recently, the board has again increased the commitment for fundraising for this project to $340,000. The only reason is that we are aware of how much the community supports this project and have continued to see the fundraising go on and want to continue with all the amenities that were in the design of the project. I have a letter that I've brought today that we sent to the mayor, and I've updated it for you today, just itemizing that commitment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John?
Thank you. I want to reiterate what I said earlier. I've come to support a protected bike lane, but I have real concerns on the cost and the design. And I was in some of the early meetings, and I didn't see many city council members there. But it's one of those things that kind of gained mass, and we had consultants from out of town designing. And I guess the thing that concerns me, if the idea is to get a protected bike lane, we can do that. And I commend your organizations for making the $340,000 contribution. We still have another nearly $3 million that has to go into it. And if you look at the funding sources that the mayor disclosed in a private meeting on December 8th, it's pulling money from a lot of sources. It's taking away from street improvements. I mean, we've got both street improvements that are direly in need. And I guess a big question I have, and I think of Shanghai. Shanghai is now the largest city in the world, 28 million people. And it's not per capita, by capita of the world. I think in Amsterdam it is, or somewhere in the Netherlands, but it's pretty darn close. And they have protected bike lanes, but they've done it in a way that gives flexibility for future growth and so forth. But it costs a tenth or less in cost for a linear block or whatever. And if the goal is to have the protected bike lane, isn't that the goal here for the bicycle enthusiasts? And if we can save the other $3 million or whatever and put it to some other uses, maybe add bike lanes elsewhere? Or even get to like Omaha, Bordeaux, France, Nuremberg. Nuremberg, Germany does it down the sidewalks. York, England, all over the world, you see the painted ones. Those aren't protected, but we're going to protect it. Why not do that and save all of that money so we can get other infrastructure improvements here?
I have to agree with the comments that have already been said by Mr. Landis on the fact that this project has been evaluated and looked at on a cost-effective basis. They have looked at what is acceptable for construction in the United States based on bicycle ways that have been built across the country, and looked at the amenities and the necessity for the lighting, the painting, and all of that. And they have come up with a plan that is acceptable and safe for this community, and that's what we're looking for. We don't want to see, our group has talked about this quite a bit and come to the understanding that the best way to do this construction is the way it's designed and make sure that it's done right the first time, so that there aren't any questions about any bike lanes coming in the future. Make sure that this one's done correctly, so we can use as an example of how a safe bike lane could be built across east-west in Lincoln.
Talking about an unsafe bike lane, and I guess as I go through a litmus test of common sense, fiscally responsible on it, and doing the right thing, I think doing the right thing is get a protected bike lane. But common sense just tells me, taking all these funds from other needed projects, when we can achieve the functionality. And again, I'm just not seeing it. I don't see it in Omaha. It's a pretty good city. You know, and I went into those meetings, and the consultants from Oregon started the ball rolling. And I see Lain Hammer here, and she's been an advocate and a strong friend over the years, and I know her dedication to bicycle pass trails and so forth. And I'm just perplexed, because this has gained a life of its own. And it is beautiful. There's no question about it. But in the whole priority of needs that we have in the community and wants, now, I mean, if you came forward and you were paying the whole $3.2 million, I'd say, "Go for it." But to ask the citizens through other means, even on the TIF that would be coming from this one project, we gerrymandered the route for that, so you'd get it there, but maybe that could go to other infrastructure, or another street construction, other bike lanes, other elements there in the city. And so it's taking money that could otherwise be used elsewhere. And so I guess I just, you know, where the city and other sources are putting in 90%, I'm concerned that that's spent properly.
I hear your concerns. Thank you. Any other questions?
Trent wants an answer to the key question from the third base coach.
I'm just curious, because, you know, being downtown and seeing the number of people that are using the unprotected bike lanes, I kind of wonder how many people are actually using. But I do see people using them quite frequently, and I see more bikes downtown than I did when I lived down there, you know, six years ago. So I know it's growing, but I didn't know if you guys have put any numbers to that or if there were any plans to put any numbers to that.
Currently, we have an electronic counter on the Rock Island Trail. And over the summer, 130,000 counts were made on the trail in three months, which was higher than we expected, actually.
That's a pretty good number.
And that is on a bike trail. It's not, we don't have any kind of electronic counter on the bikeways downtown now, the north-south lanes. So I can't give you a number, but we have gotten significant support from the downtown employers. So we understand that that means they want to have this access for their employees. There are more and more employees that are riding their bikes to work. There's no question.
Which employers are those?
I don't want to forget any. And so, well, I'll tell you.
Just give me a sample.
Nelnet has supported, the Olson Foundation has supported this, Assurity Life has supported this, and there are others, and I apologize for not bringing them to attention, if there's more that they want to give me in the back.
And you're an Olson employee as well.
I am, and I, yeah.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Carl?
Thank you. Ms. Griffin, the, Mr. Camp has suggested that we can do a protected bike lane more cheaply.
Economically, please.
Cheaply. And presumably, that would be without signals. Safety is critically important, and we've had several incidents in the last six months or so of serious bike accidents, or crashes, maybe we call them now. Okay? So you've probably looked at the design and the necessity of having the signalized setup here. Can you talk a little bit about safety and what this would provide?
So I think it is very important that this will be a new functioning bicycle-protected bikeway along downtown Lincoln. We need to have cyclists and motors both understand how it works. And the lighting is a very important aspect of the project to make sure it's operating smoothly and safely as it was intended. There are other ways to just do bollards along the way, that, again, or even, that would probably be the least expensive option, but this... But this is to provide a barrier on a good portion of the bike way, to provide a separation from the bikes, from the traffic. And that, again, is another reason for the increased cost. There are also amenities related to environmental aspects of water quality. Again, those were things that were discussed amongst the group that was supporting 10% of the project, being our trails board members. And they came to the conclusion that, yes, this is important, all these aspects are important to fund. Safety is being the number one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th, Suite 1900. Before you today, in support of the amendment to the redevelopment plan, I represent Aspen Heights, which is the developer of the so-called 18th and P multifamily apartment project that we know now as the Aspen Project, which that project will involve the construction of four different structures, each containing five stories for housing. The ultimate capacity will be approximately 630 residents that will be walking and biking in downtown Lincoln. Consequently, as a part of the redevelopment agreement, my client was very supportive of the efforts to expand the redevelopment area to include the potential funding for the N Street bike path. And I'm here to support it on behalf of my client, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
Teri Pope Gonzalez, P-O-P-E-g-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z, 349 South First Street. We all know I have a problem with the TIF. I am the neighborhood that everybody's left out. We're on First and L. We're seven blocks long, two blocks wide. We had a special-needs child almost run over. Those kids don't even have sidewalks to ride their bicycles on. So, see, we're the neighborhood that everybody forgets. We're over there. So somebody needs to start paying attention, put the bicycles toward us, the trails. Our sidewalks aren't even fixed. Now, that special-needs child, if my husband hadn't jumped that fence, that truck would have killed that kid. Now, his name is Victor. They send a short bus for him. I didn't realize the short bus meant, I don't for sure know what's wrong with him, but he's special needs, he's where the i's are different, I think he has downs or something. He should be allowed to ride his bicycle if he wants to. He can't even ride it on the sidewalk, let alone the streets. So I guess I'm in opposition. So cheaply, we would take a cheap bicycle path. Any day, we would take a cheap one, just so the kids would have one. They have no safe place. And these are little kids. I realize they're not the right color, and they don't have daddies, and they don't have deep pockets. But somebody needs to pay attention to that little neighborhood. Seven blocks long, two blocks wide. Those kids should be entitled to have as much as downtown does. We're on this side of downtown. We're First and L. It's not that far. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 17, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Fortunato Sanchez, authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property generally located at 344 North 27th Street.
David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, applicant in this case. You are familiar with this project in that it's been up before, and having received the guidance of the council, we have adjusted our plans accordingly and bring you back a solution that is acceptable to us. This is the property that the city bought. We did spend $68,000 for it because that was the appraised value. It's hard to think of this as having a $68,000 appraised value, but it does, in part because it's land along North 27th Street, which does have value. This is what it looked like. We spent $20,000 to demo this building, so we have $88,000 in the land. The, what we're bringing to you is the result of a series of responses that we got when we put up signs and took bids from the community. The community generally liked another idea, but this one was on the radar as being acceptable, and it was $98,000. It will eventually become a restaurant. The provisions say that the buyer will do a privacy wall to protect the neighbors to the north. They will grass what is now a dirt area, and then will build that restaurant within the next three years. And I would ask for the adoption of the sale and answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
So Dave, just to confirm, what we had before us previously with the item on pending was a situation where the city would have continued to own the property, would have leased it, would have invested in additional.
Additional money for the parking lot, that's true.
To the tune of 160,000, the bids came back higher.
$60,000, that's right.
Some thousand dollars.
We will part with the land, it'll be on the tax rolls, and there will be investment on the location.
Thank you.
Questions? Dave, I'm assuming if this passes, you will want the other pulled from the pending?
Not only pulled, but killed.
That's what I meant. Okay.
Dispatched.
Very good. All right, thank you.
We don't own.
Any other questions? Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Okay. Approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Win-Win and Tan Lam, authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property generally located at 1739 North 28th Street.
David Landis, Urban Development Department, applicant in this case. This is part of some work that we've been doing in the Hartley neighborhoods along North 27th Street. It is hard to see from this picture, the rotten window frames, the warped roof, the broken-up foundation that this building had. We secured it for $21,000 in an auction. This is what it looked like in the back. This was the backyard. This was the kitchen area. This was the bathroom that was there. This was the basement. We subsequently oversaw the construction of a house at this location, using the prisoner labor in the Prairie Gould construction. And this is the house that we're selling for $140,000. This is the same kitchen. This is the bathroom. This is the basement. We spent $21,000 to secure the house. We demoed it for $9,000. We constructed the house, and now we sell it for $140,000. In the event, these two meet with your approval today, and the land sale that we have pending for vote for tonight, which is the work on 84th and South, I thought particularly you, Councilman Emery, would like to know that during your eight years that you've been here, the city will have sold 39 parcels for a total of $4 million of purchase price. Those $4 million which we got from that have occasioned $8.8 million of valuation growth, and that is almost 20 acres of formerly city-owned land that is now in the private sector during the time that you served on the city council. And of course, all the members who have been here for that period of time have been. And I would ask if there are any questions?
Questions? John.
You went through the $9,000 acquisition, I believe, $21,000 demo, or maybe reverse.
Backwards.
Backwards. And then the construction, you didn't say how much the construction was.
The construction was actually somewhat more, although at what we would regard as a bargain price. We paid $110 a square foot. That would have been about $150,000. That is not remarkable, since we want this house to be sold for affordable housing, and this was the price that was set, and we secured it.
So it's a total of $180,000 and sell it for $140,000.
That's right. And if you compare the before and the after, that is community redevelopment. And if you're on that block or across that street, the marketability of your house has just gone up.
Just want to know the numbers.
You bet. Any other questions? Dave, was this, was this part of the three houses that were bought all similarly about that time?
Yes, we bought a number of lots, some of which have been demoed and now.
All together.
This one got ahead of the curve because we got a contract with Prairie Gould to build this house and now sell it.
So there is at least the potential for more development on that area, which, if you did do three properties at some point, certainly you're going to stimulate perhaps additional, additional building, or at least improvements to the houses that are already in the area.
It's not uncommon for an area to just take on an atmosphere, and people just going to say, you know, either I'm going to move, or I'm going to live in this till it falls down around me, but I'm not going to spend a lot of money, you know, making it better. When you see across the street other projects that go on, people would say, you know what, it will do that. So it does have a rising tide effect, particularly if you can get them clustered. That's the most important thing, if you can get that.
And I think you see that synergy in things like City Impact and Neighborhoods and the Row Housing on Vine Street, where people, other houses have decided that now the neighborhood might make it.
And by the way, if there's anything that looks better than that City Impact project on North 33rd Street, remembering what was there, it's wonderful community redevelopment.
Exactly. And I don't know how you quantify that. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
That would conclude our public hearing. We can go into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item 15 is the resolution declaring the official intent of the city to reimburse certain expenses in connection with the acquisition, purchase, and installation of light poles and related equipment from the proceeds of City of Lincoln certificates of participation. This was introduced by Christiansen.
Moved.
Moved by Trent, second.
Second.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion, call roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 16 was Comp Plan Conformance 14026, introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, John.
Well, as you know earlier, I asked a number of questions, and I'm 100% behind a protected bike lane, but looking at the numbers and how this has evolved, I just see other needs in Lincoln. And I'd love to split this issue and vote, do we want a protected bike lane? You've got 100% of my support. But at the $3.25 million, when there are other needs, it's just, what I've seen around the world, we can do the equivalent for a lot less, and I think there are needs in Lincoln that would come before this. I compliment the Great Plains Trail Network for its contribution and efforts on behalf of the bike trails and everything. But I, I'm sorry, I just can't support a bike lane of this proportion. And it's, I think there are some economically better ways to achieve this that aren't undermining the safety and integrity of the needs for the biking community.
Any other question? Anybody else just like to discuss? Larry.
You know, Lincoln is a city with a ton of momentum right now, and part of that momentum includes things like our trail system and this bike lane. This bike lane is going to change the face of downtown. It's going to provide a safe passageway from east to west. It's going to be a major connector, an arterial for bikes, which offer an alternative for those who want to avoid the hassles of parking a car downtown. We've seen that businesses want this. We've seen that individuals, to the tune of 340,000 in their own personal dollars, want this. It doesn't mean that every bike lane that comes after this will look like this. Not every bike, some of the bike lanes could be more what Councilman Camp has described, but this is, this is your downtown main thoroughfare for bikes, and it needs to be safe. And it needs to send a signal, not only of the practical elements of safety for people who use it and people who drive around it, but it needs to send a signal that Lincoln is a 21st century city, and this is what 21st century cities look like. And so I'm very excited about this N Street bike lane. I think that, while you mentioned that money should be used for street improvements, to me, this is a street improvement. This is a street improvement that accounts for different kinds of transportation that our community wants. So I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with it.
Anybody else? John.
Well, I just want to say, we're so lucky to have a group like the Great Plains Trails Network, and I thank them very much for their interest and involvement in this and very generous contribution to the project. This really is a community project. It involves a lot of stakeholders, and it has been underway and under discussion for a number of years. And so I feel like, you know, we have, we've come up with a project that is a really good one. I think this will be a great asset to downtown and to Lincoln in general. And so I'm pleased, finally, that we're at this point where we may actually be able to have this constructed and see the benefits, the fruits of all of this effort over the past many years.
Anybody else? Call roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Motion carried, five to one. Public hearing ordinance is second reading, were items 17 and 18. Ordinance is third reading. Item 19, change of zone 14030, application of the acting planning director for a change from H3 highway commercial to R2 residential and I1 industrial on property generally located at North 44th and Colfax Circle, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, next item, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 20 is text amendment 14017, amending the maximum building height provisions in the AG district by amending section 2763250 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to add the AG district to the list of districts in which a permitted use exceeding the maximum height permitted in a district may be allowed by special permit and amending section 2772010 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to increase the allowable building height in the AG district for farmstead splits from 30 feet to 35 feet, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion, call roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 21 is text amendment 14019, amending chapter 27.68 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to personal wireless facilities by amending sections 2768020, 2768030, 2768120, and 2768130 to modify the definitions of abandonment and partial abandonment, to modify administrative permit provisions, and to delete provisions regarding the initial term and renewal of special permits and administrative permits, and repealing sections 2768040, 2768050, 060, and 070 of the Lincoln Municipal Code in their entirety, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion.
I do, I just want to mention briefly that about this item and the two that preceded it, that I think they reflect some really quality customer service from the part of the planning department. I think that I see Marvin's legacy here. I see David continuing that culture of commitment to improving process. You know, during the development slowdown, the planning department spent a lot of time looking at how they could simplify the code, simplified the zoning regulations. And what I see here are different applicant requests that have come forward where the department has said, okay, this applicant needs some help, but could we actually make the entire system work better for future applicants as well? And I think the result is that people who own property, who want to make changes to it in the future, are going to have an easier time. Businesses are going to be better served, and I just want to compliment their work.
Discussion, call roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Tenth and vacated North Eleventh Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp? Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-three is vacation one four zero one one, vacating approximately point zero four acres of street stub at the northeast corner of West C Street and Southwest Sixth Street, and approximately point zero five acres of the east-west alley, north of West B Street, east of Southwest Sixth Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-four is amending chapter twenty-one point zero nine of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to registration of neglected buildings by adding a new section numbered twenty-one point zero nine point one six five, to provide for the deposit and distribution of fees and penalties, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I will quickly say that the problem resolution team is a multi-organization team that looks at the worst of the worst properties, and at some times, we have to, to spend money to have properties razed, to have the new ordinance for neglected properties, we're paying some of that, liens are put against those properties. This simply allows for when those liens are paid back, for that money to be reimbursed back to the PRT team, and we're per chief of, Councilman Baird bringing this forward. Call or, call or roll, please?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-five is annexation one four zero zero seven, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately twelve acres of property generally located at Anthony Lane and O Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion?
Sleeping.
Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-six, change of zone one four zero three two, application of Heritage Lakes LLC, for a change of zone from AG Agriculture to R-three residential on property generally located at Anthony Lane and O Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-seven, approving a conditional annexation and zoning agreement between Noel Chad, Noel and Gloria Chad and the City of Lincoln for the development and annexation of property generally located at Northwest Fortieth Street and West Vine Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Call or?
Yes, and in North Lincoln, we often have conflicts between residential and industrial sites, and this, this is a case where we don't have such a conflict. It's an industrial site that is being used to crush debris from, from roads projects, important roads projects on Northwest Forty-eighth and I-eighty. It's a great location and use for that property, and, and good to see this, this opportunity.
Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-eight is annexation one four zero zero six, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately twenty-two acres of property generally located at West Vine Street between Northwest Twenty-seventh Street and Northwest Fortieth Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item twenty-nine, change of zone one four zero three one, application of Noel and Gloria Chad, for a change of zone from AG Agriculture to I-one industrial on approximately twenty-two acres of property generally located at West Vine, between Northwest Twenty-seventh and Northwest Fortieth Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item thirty, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and RC Kruger Development Company to purchase approximately nine point three seven acres of city-owned property generally located at twenty-two oh one South Eighty-fourth Street, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I would note for the record, we do have a motion to amend number one, to accept a substitute agreement.
Move motion to amend number one.
Both seconds are by Larian. Discussion? Call or?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Uh, main motion? Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item thirty-one, Comp Plan Amendment one four zero zero eight, amending the twenty-forty Comp Plan to change the future land use map from urban residential to commercial on approximately nine point two acres, from public and semi-public to commercial on approximately point eight acres, and from urban residential designation to public and semi-public designation on approximately point two acres, generally located at South Eighty-fourth and Carl Ridge Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp? Motion carried six to zero. Item thirty-two is change of zone one four zero two eight, application of RC Kruger Development Company, with the consent of the City of Lincoln and Lincoln Federal Savings and Loan, for a change of zone from R-one residential to P-public use, from R-one residential, P-public use, to H-four general commercial, and from R-three residential to H-four general commercial, on property generally located at South Eighty-fourth and Carl Ridge Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item thirty-three, special permit one four zero four five, application of RC Kruger Development Company with the consent of the City of Lincoln and Lincoln Federal Savings and Loan to develop land service commercial, to develop up to one hundred thirty thousand square feet of mini warehouses in the H-four general commercial district, with requested waivers of the required rear and side yard setbacks, and the requirement that post-development flows be less than pre-development flows, for an onsite detention pond on property generally located at South Eighty-fourth and Carl Ridge Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Just let me say, this project was a long time, and, and took a big, bit of a circular path to get to where we went. At the end of the day, it is probably the best use of the land. It is certainly more money than we would have gotten from the other project. I'm not sure that all of the rationale for how we got here today was worthwhile or, or healthy, but there's where we are, and so sometimes, I guess, it just happens. Call or roll, please? I'm sorry.
With your, I appreciate that, Mr. Emery. Yeah, I, I'd like to second that. I think that the city and everyone worked in this, 'cause it was a, a challenging matter, and there were concerned citizens and others, and some good projects, and it was opened up to other opportunities, but I think the end result here has been a, a good compromise, and will be good for that particular part of town.
Well, it's not very often we end up with an outcome like this, where we're getting the best price of all of the bidders, where we're getting a project the neighbors are in support of, and that also helps to further the goals of our Public Works Department, which does not want additional accesses along a busy street. I mean, I had no idea, none of us did, about how this would turn out when we started down this path, and we said, we aren't sure what has been proposed, and what was before us before was the right thing. Anytime that there is land that is undeveloped, it's, it's often leads to controversy, whether it's privately owned land or publicly owned land. But certainly, when, when the city owns the land, I think we have a special responsibility to, to work out something that is, that is compatible with the neighbors, and I'm, I'm really pleased to see that that's what's happened here, so I appreciate all the effort that went into this.
I do too, and I also wanna make it clear that although it says we're vacating a street, we are not actually closing that access. There will be access, that will be the only access to this property. There will be no access off of Eighty-fourth. It just now will not be a city street. And I, again, I think sometimes just blind dumb luck is where we get to, and I think that's how we got here, but it was a lot of discussion. But the truth is, it wasn't where we started and how we got here. I'm not exactly sure, but we'll take it. Call or roll, please?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item thirty-four, vacation one four zero zero nine, vacating the Viewpoint Drive right-of-way lying north of Carl Ridge Road, generally located at South Eighty-fourth and Carl Ridge Road, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Orders first reading were items thirty-five through forty-seven. Ordnances on first reading are items forty-eight through fifty-six, and our pending list are items fifty-seven through sixty.
Uh, we have one more request.
We could withdraw item sixty?
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion.
We have to wait on item sixty, because we haven't voted that in yet, have we? Did we just?
It's pending. We need to pull it off and vote on it, so we need to wait.
We need to wait, because we didn't ask.
Oh, yes, you are correct.
But we do have another one that we're gonna.
I'll note that for next week, then.
Perfect. Go ahead, Trent.
I'm gonna move that we remove item fifty-nine, to give the city administration the ability to look at that one again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John.
You're wanting to withdraw it?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that's correct.
No action. We just expect something different.
No action, we're just gonna draw it. They're still working on it. It probably will not, it will come back to us, it just probably will not come back to us necessarily in this format.
That'll be fine.
Okay. So that was moved by Fellers, and seconded by?
Camp.
Camp. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. And anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda, and not a plan to appear on a future agenda, may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session.
I'm Jane Swoboda, wear a rosary. I invite you to a paradise on earth. There are some corrections. Russian President Medvedev was sodomy raped by Putin a month ago. corrections. Russian President Medvedev was sodomy raped by Putin a month ago. Medvedev wept to his wife and didn't tolerate the behavior. Eighty percent of Russians that came of age in nineteen nineties had pot and vodka, and almost the same eighty percent had abortions and didn't marry. Russia has only ten percent of the population compared to nineteen sixty. Moscow and Saint Petersburg's population is over fifty percent Muslim Stanis. Putin's gay bi incest doer that intruded onto others' bodies and intruded into other countries. Putin let, let intruders into Russia and let intruders into his body. Putin constripped, constripped every eighteen to twenty-eight-year-old to come to Christian countries as plain closed army of male rapist, sodomy rapist, and female teacher child molesters. Putin told them to have vodka and pot every meal to make them meaner and deranged. Ban alcohol and pot. In nineteen forty, women drank alcohol mated without attaining a husband and father for their coming baby. In nineteen seventy, women drank alcohol had pot without attaining a husband and father for her coming baby. In nineteen seventy-four, women drank alcohol, had pot, and mated and had an abortion without attaining a husband and father and their baby no longer alive. In nineteen ninety, women drank alcohol, had pot, and an abortion and AIDS without a father, without a mother, and without a baby alive. In two thousand ten, women drank alcohol, had pot, and an abortion, and gave AIDS in a pinprick machine if she was from Russia and was doing away with the American man, as seen in September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen University News front page. In two thousand fifteen, the concern is that some alcohol has been mixed with rehibnol or red bush tea to make it lethal. Chris Patton had a BBC announced alcohol with rehibnol to be given out to Brits in March fourteenth, two thousand twelve News. Forbid alcohol. Thousands of foreigners have come to a big city to do away with Americans in one day by getting indoors with injection putty that gets hard after a minute and with lethal gas and lethal essential oil put in the fridge food. Americhs can wear a rosary and put white cross above the doorknob and use a log lock. Columbia University in New York City has lost thirty-six thousand students since May. The Chinese did away with Americans in May and were fifty percent of students in summer. Dorms hold ten thousand students. The Russians came by ship to Manhattan as a plain closed army and gassed and germed most Chinese. Chinese in November came by ship and gassed and germed almost all Russian students in dorms. January, the faith month, another purge occurred with Russian students. The Chinese, the Russians, and the Muslim ships are sinking each other's ships in the Mediterranean, the Red Sea, the Pacific and Atlantic Ocean. Madagascar is having a bubonic plague from South Africa's bioterror program and the World Health Organization Chinese Communist head, genocider Dr. Chan. Many neighborhoods in America have ninety percent foreigners. In winter, the ground is too hard to bury the corpses in the countryside, so corpses are bought by garbage truck to sport Coliseum basements. New Caucasian candidates that won are Soviets. The Chinese put American company employees in prison according to Forbes Magazine October twenty-seventh. Put an amusement park in place of labor camps and free our people. The American pharmaceutical company heads in China are in prison and the Chinese have tainted our pills. Don't shop at Walmart. We'll make everything we own, save our resources to be made into gifts. The gay Pope Francis isn't Catholic. He said, it's okay to punch persons. And he has let gay priests molest our altar boys and had a list of millions of Catholics genocided but didn't side to announce it. Burgoglio has been deposed. That former convicts in homeless shelters so they don't freeze and break into homes to rob people to get warm. This is the second coming of Christ. Christ is here judging all people. Only the kind shall remain.
Time's up.
Here for weak persons.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
I've been busy since the last time I saw you. Have you started me?
You have to say who you are, please.
Oh, I'll sign when I'm done. Terry Pope Gonzalez, three forty-nine South First Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh eight. I'm sure you all know where I live. You guys see what I put in the paper? It's a tribute to my father-in-law. Ascension Joe Gonzalez, bantamweight, Golden Gloves champion. See this here? This is a howitzer. Since everybody got upset, I used the word gun. I took my glasses off because it upsets me when you guys roll your eyes and whisper to each other. So this way, I can see you. So, see this here? Joe Gonzalez got here nineteen twenty-seven, took possession of my property nineteen fifty-two. My husband was born in that house nineteen fifty-three. Now, the councilman that let everything happen in two thousand, or nineteen ninety-nine, so I'm anal about the paperwork. Actually, nineteen ninety-eight is when I first came in front of the city council. Cindy Johnson was the councilman, or the council lady. She's the one that stole the fair, right, and went somewhere. Anyway, just so everybody understands, that concrete company, that construction company, that's actually in front page of Saturday's paper, you guys are only charging them a thousand dollars because they're late on that Eighty-Fourth and Old Cheney. Hawkins got charged a lot more than that, but Hawkins is not going to take it laying down. So you see, what people don't understand, Hawkins is from Texas. See, I know those people. My husband has a nephew, Big Dave. His dad was a safety inspector. So see, I don't appreciate what's going on, especially in my neighborhood. That's seven blocks long, two blocks wide. I did get the fence. It's only sixteen years too late. Did not stop the noise, does not stop the dust, did not stop the vehicles. So I don't appreciate it. One thing I don't appreciate, Dave Landis pushed me. How many of you called the police? Jeff, did you? Did anybody do anything about it? Oh, that's right. I deserved it, didn't I? I was just giving Ernie Castile Chubby's Chili. Dave Landis had no right to push me. Which one of you called the police to say you pushed me? Not one of you. But everybody got upset. Yes, they sent a cop, Officer Rob Brenner. Now, on Monday, when I went in front of you guys, I suppose I shouldn't have said gun. What I meant to say was big guns. When my brothers say big guns, they do this, and then they kiss their arms. That's what they do. And I guess, see, when you guys roll your eyes, that really upsets me. So when I told the officer, I said, well, I don't know what I said. Go up and look. My brothers were just here for that memorial drive, for that kid that got run over. Somebody had to be really drunk to drag somebody two miles and nobody can find him. And here, people want to do, have twenty-four-hour alcohol? Really? I've never seen a pothead rape anything but the refrigerator. But a drunk, as soon as he has a belly full, he out chasing tail. And how I know? Everybody comes over to the gutter where I am and everybody messes with the little girls in my neighborhood. And it wasn't a councilman I saw, just so you guys know. I did catch a politician in my neighborhood. My husband even said, isn't that? I said, yeah, it is. What people don't understand, I take pictures, lots and lots and lots of pictures. Yes, I did take his vehicle. It was a man. I wonder what he told his wife. I bet he told his wife he was going on an out-of-town, a conference. Everybody in my neighborhood knows what the B and B factory is, does not mean bed and breakfast. So when, when everybody in this town wants to play in the gutter, go to your own side of town. Leave the little girls in my neighborhood alone. Because you need to understand, I'm training all of them, and they will all have Teamster bells on them. Now, when their daddies get out of prison, their daddies are going to start wanting to know, how come their children were abused? So everybody needs to understand. I sent letters off letting everybody know who's been in the neighborhood. Oh, and something else, maybe somebody ought to tell the governor. Somebody is saying for the kids to call him the governor. See, I keep the kids when the mothers have to go work that third minimum wage job, okay? Just so you understand, when the kids come to my house, we have church, and they come and tell, Mama T, Carl Eskridge saw. Do those little kids come tell me? Everything. So what I'm going to tell you is whoever's beating up those little girls the day I see it, it's going to be ugly. Because we can't get the cops to come over. You guys already know, that man that got run over, two people have been run over at that spot, and it's the same contractor. So yes, I'm working on attorneys helping them. They're going to do a whole lot of lawsuits. My invoices are coming out. My brothers have them together. They're going to be mailed out by the, so nobody's head explode, because I've already said this. I don't know what people were thinking sixteen years ago. You thought I was just going to take this laying down? I don't think so. And Jeff, just so everybody knows, never in a million years did I want his son, I wanted his tally wecker to fall off maybe, but not his child. See, I'm never about the children. I'm about saving the children. Am I, am I done?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you much. I will sign this now. I'm three forty-nine South First Street.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Mr. Chair, seeing no one coming forward, I'd move for adjournment.
Second. Seconded by?
Jonathan.
John. Nope. By Jonathan? Okay. Call roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
We are adjourned.